Good evening, welcome to the Bryan City Council meeting for 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Next up is hearing of public concerns. Mr. Cox?
Steve Cox, Huntington Drive, Bryan. Conversation with respect, last meeting, with respect to the request to have the vacuuming of the gravel done. And the answer was that it might damage the equipment. Well, any use of a motor vehicle is going to have an adverse effect.
Well, it was twofold. It was twofold. One was, one issue was the issue of what it does to the equipment. The other is, is the inconsistency with all the other paved and whatever that's called. Chip and sealed roads that we do, we don't, we don't vacuum there. So now you're gonna have people calling, tie going, since you've already, if you're gonna do it in Huntington Drive, you need to do it, it was like ten to two, there's a variety of different places. Am I incorrect? I can't hear you.
No, you're not incorrect.
So, I think it was those two things, and I'm sorry for the interruption, but that was a fairly important.
All right, I can see that point. But my question is, last week, there was a Bryan City truck, a half dump truck, whatever, had a shovel and what I assume was black road bonding material or whatever, cold patch. And it went down Huntington Drive, looped around South Court, Middle Court, North Court, and left. Never stopped, never did anything. That is wear and tear on the vehicle. That's the point that I wanted to make. In addition, there was a Johnson labeled street sweeper that came down Huntington Drive, around South Court, up to 34, without its, any of its brushes moving. And when I left the house a couple minutes later, I saw it cleaning the curbs right in front of the Don North building, on the Westbound side. And again, why would, and it may not have been a city vehicle, but why in the world would anybody operate something like that? If you're not going to do any cleaning function, why go gallivanting around, joyriding apparently, on the vehicle before you start the work? That's wear and tear.
So, Mr. Cox, I hate to interrupt you again, but, you know, we've been doing this for two and a half years. That is an administrative issue. So if you have a complaint about one of the city employees and how they're performing their jobs, you can either call their superintendent or you can call me. Council is the legislative body of this city. They do not need to hear this unless it's an egregious thing. That is not anything you've given me the courtesy to talk to me about. I don't think you've talked to Mr. Ringstrom about, but you're identifying his vehicle. So, just to be clear on the functions of government, this is not a law that they're changing or budgetary item that they're putting in. So, they are not gonna address that with you. That's something you need to set up a meeting with me if you have an issue with an employee.
Okay. Well, again, I couldn't identify the employee. For any, either case.
Fair enough, but you're-
My question is-
Carry on.
If the vehicles are being used for non-job functions, and there's additional wear and tear that's put on the vehicles, and I can understand not wanting to have to repurchase these vehicles more often than they need to be.
The issue was, you were asking for a leaf blower that picks up leaves to pick up stones. And that is not what the equipment was made for, and it would damage the internal system of that leaf blower. We cannot take a street sweeper and use those brushes to pick up stones in the grass because it would also ruin that, that brush piece of, like, your last request was for them to, for the street department to come and suck up stones that were in the grass. Correct? Yes. We do not have equipment that would sustain any kind of damage. Leaves are a much different texture than asphalt or chip and seal, correct?
I think we're talking stones here and not asphalt or chip and seal.
Okay. Stones and leaves are still different weight and dimension. Okay. Okay.
Can you explain why he went in there with the street sweeper? He was sweeping High Street. When the curb ends, we don't sweep non-curved streets normally unless there's a bunch of stone on them. So he pulled in there, turned around to get the other side of High Street, going back towards town. That's why he was in there, 'cause that's safer to do that than to do a U-turn in the middle of High Street or 34.
Well, just as, it would be less distance if he had turned on the Huntington, went into North Court, turned around.
Maybe he was checking out how many stones were out there. But I don't think three blocks is something to come to council about.
How many vehicles do you have? Three blocks for every vehicle every day? That could be quite a sum.
Can we just get back to the council meeting?
Sure.
And just be addressed at a different time than the department had rather than-
All right. And again, thank you for the time, thank you for the explanation. And I'm going to leave you now because it's too hot in here for me.
That's fine. Have a good night. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please state your name, please.
Yeah. Larry Harzela, Ward 3, John Betts. Mr. Betts, Councilman Betts gave me a copy of the proposed low mobility ordinance. I understand that's changing tonight. Two comments. I have an e-bike, and I just wanna make sure I'm doing what's right. And I, it was hard to figure out where e-bikes come in there, and I don't think that's the whole gist of the legislation. I think it's aimed at something else. But I'm assuming as a licensed driver and school bus driver and with the CDL and everything, that I'm probably okay with my e-bike if I'm following the street laws. The other thing I would say is, if there's, if there's a new ordinance tonight, if it's been changed, to give it three readings so everybody can look at it. And then the other comment would be regarding kids. I'm a bus driver, I see the kids on these things. Yes, they can zip around on them, but after my bus ride tonight, I was on the way home, I live on Patrick Court, there was a nice young lady, probably eight or 10, riding one, coming down Portland, going north on the, on the, on the right side of the road. She was being respectful, she was going slow, and in my rearview mirror, I see she crossed over and did a nice job. So my, my comment is, don't penalize the young kids. Give them a chance to ride these things without, I think the ordinance says something about 16 and younger, you have to be with an adult. I think it's gonna be tough to enforce that. And if it's part of the state thing, I know you can't maybe change that, but otherwise, I would say minimize that. Let them follow the laws and see if they can do what's right. I think they will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we'll go on to item number five. John has the ordinance, please number three.
Nope. Clerk's report, Mary.
Number four.
Mary, clerk's report.
Yeah, sorry about that. How about the clerk's treasure report? I put my glasses on, I can see now.
That's fine, no problem. So, council has been given the financial records, bank statements, et cetera, for the month ended April 30th, 2025. And I'll have some more to report to you, probably in next month's report, in regards to where we are with income taxes and that kinda thing. But if you have any questions regarding what you have in front of you, I would entertain any of those. And just one quick note, this past weekend was the transition from Premier Bank to West Banco. That's who the city does most of its banking with. And so far, it's gone off without a hitch.
I was gonna ask a question for you, John. We're coming into the month of May, and in 2024, there's a, that spike there in revenue. Are you, from income tax, we expecting that to happen again this year? Or do you think it won't be, it'll be spread out more across the, across the year?
So, that spike occurs every year. It used to happen in April because April 15th was the due date, but now that we, now that we use Rita to administer our taxes, there's a month lag in when we receive that money. So, what used to be April 15th for our purposes is now May. So, May is the biggest month of the year. I can tell you for sure that that spike, there will be a spike, it won't be as big as that one. We're gonna see a hit to our revenues with what we've seen so far in May. And that's why I'll have a little more to report on that next month.
Thanks.
Item number five, the normans, John, please number three.
Can I get a motion in seconds?
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll motion it, I'll approve that.
He's getting to me.
Second.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is there a particular reason it took that long? 'Cause it's like six months. Are we, are we talking about that collective bargaining agreement or no?
No, we're talking the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
I retract every word I just said.
So, on the, on the treasurer's report, Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Now are we safe to go on to number five?
Yes.
I have a question about number five. It's just-
Can you read it first?
Can we read it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's the heat, guys. I promise those of you that are not usually here, it's gotta be the heat.
Ordinance number 25, 2025, an ordinance approving the collective bargaining agreement between the International Association of Firefighters, Local 5243, and the City of Bryan.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
You've already heard my question, maybe it'll be incorporated.
Negotiations between the City of Bryan and the Internal Association of Firefighters, Local 5243. We began in October. Both parties then reached a final agreement late February. The contract is set to be in effect retro from January 1st of 25 through December 31st of 2027. The union has since reviewed, signed, approved, and so at this time, I'm requesting that the council's approval of this ordinance to finalize the collective bargaining agreement.
And Mr. Betts, do you wanna re-ask that question? I'd prefer Mr. Fischel maybe answer it so we're within legal.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, just, I was part of that.
Yeah.
Why did it take that long?
So, there were some disputes between the union and the city about some language, whether it should've stayed in or not stayed in.
Oh.
And there was some inertia on my part and the union reps' part, to be frank. So, that's why.
Okay.
Nothing of any huge significance.
No. Well, that, I mean, you can understand my question, right? I mean-
Oh, yeah.
We, we're at a table.
Yeah.
As far as we're concerned, it's done. And then six months later-
And they did have a new union representative, too, that, so there were some communication changes.
That's helpful. Thank that answer my question, thanks.
I just didn't wanna break any, you know.
I was intrigued, though, to ask, how does this compare to the other ones that we've done? It seems similar, but to our other negotiated agreements. Are there any significant differences between this one and the other ones, or?
No, I, there were very minimal changes, mainly just some updated verbiage and to reflect the city's new handbook, but nothing-
We updated a classification, like, one that didn't come into play anymore and one that maybe did for wage classification for them, too.
Okay.
And we adjusted per the new handbook as well, right?
Right. Yeah. Like, any changes we made in the handbook, especially the probationary period, the vacation after, like, those kind of things, the holiday-
The holidays.
We had to put all of those in as well.
'Cause it's not a light read, so.
What?
You should have been at negotiations.
Well, at least the air worked those days.
Yeah.
That would've been fun.
Well, I'll move to the span.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance, John, please number three.
Ordinance number 26, 2025, an ordinance creating Chapter 377 of the Bryan codified ordinances to regulate the use of electric personal assistive mobility devices.
So, council, I'm gonna let, honestly, Mr. Fischel take the bulk of this. If you haven't figured out yet, this ordinance has been the absolute bane of my existence because I, I go back and forth with one parental rights because I am a parent, and luckily, my kids have cars now and I don't have to worry about the scooters and some of the safety complaints I've had from neighbors and people in the community that are concerned about a few. But the other piece of that is, you know, we went back and forth, there was a new legislation that was passed, there's been more investigation into that, and it may not actually be the scooters that they were referring to, and may have been more of the segways that are in the big cities. So you have the new ordinance, and I'm gonna let Mark go into that. We also have the original ordinance 19 that you guys had tabled at the last minute. So however you discuss this, maybe it's something where you wanna not do the one that we have on for tonight as a first reading, and maybe you wanna go back and say, well, we kinda liked 19, maybe we add helmets or something at a certain age if that's a concern. 'Cause we did, we did have those conversations at one point, too. Sorry, there's a sports award banquet for her son, she, she gets to go. So I do have those, in case you didn't bring them or you wanna look at them. I have copies of those, so just let me know. But do you wanna go further into detail, please?
So, you obviously have a new version that was just read, a new proposed version regulating primarily e-scooters. However, as the mayor alluded to, there had been some confusion, and I was confused, for sure. There are two provisions in the revised code. One deals with micro mobility devices, which is 4511.514, and one deals with electric personal assistive something, something or other, that's, which is 4511.512 of the revised code. I understood both of those initially to both incorporate regulation, or incorporate e-scooters. They do not. 4511.5112, and I wanna get this right, so I don't wanna just give it a short trip. The electric personal assistive mobility devices is regulated in, as I said, 4511.512 of the Ohio Revised Code. That is, those are segways, and only segways. So, again, partly that's my fault, partly I think it's the legislator's fault, but not, you know, it's just so unclear.
Well, it's okay, I've had conversations with our local legislator, too, about the confusion here.
Right. And so, what I can tell you is that, you know, I know the, this council's interest is in e-scooters primarily, and that, so that might mean that it makes sense to return to ordinance 1925 that you tabled, and perhaps amend that ordinance to add some of the things that are not in that ordinance but were in, but are in the one that was just read for this evening. So, there, to be clear, there is no provision under the Ohio Revised Code that talks about age limitations that I could find in terms of using e-scooters. Yes, there's a provision that says you can't rent them if you're under 16, but there's no provision that prohibits you from using them at any age in particular. And there's no provision about helmets. So, e-scooters, to be clear, fall, are a micro mobility device under the revised code, and that section of the law of the Ohio Revised Code specifically says that a local city council can pass an ordinance that, and contains additional restrictions should you so decide. So you can add some things to, and, and actually, there are some things in 1925 that were not right out of the revised code, but were out of other ordinances that I thought made sense and for your, that added for your consideration, like the 25 mile an hour zones, like, there are a couple other things we can talk about. But if you wanna talk about 1925 at all, I would recommend technically correct to, for someone to make the motion to take that off the table, and so that way you can consider both of them, and we can go from there.
Well, I felt like when I read this, when I bumped into that, that, the definition of electric personal assistive mobility device, it, when I read it, it's like, what are we talking about? So then now to hear you say that, well, they're talking about segways, o- okay. And I feel like this is just very specific because there are so many electric devices that people are riding and that are, and when I say people, I mean a variety of different ages. So, I just, this language seems to be very, very focused on a, when I was reading it, very focused on a very specific or certain thing. So, to hear you say that, yeah, that seems to be the problem with it.
I apologize for the, the contributions I made to the confusion. But yes, it's, it is, it's hard to figure out, and that's why I said, instead of trying to necessarily work from, I think this is what, ordinance 2625 was just numbered, maybe, maybe looking at 1925 makes more sense in deciding if, if, how, how if at all you may want to amend that to incorporate perhaps, again, your call, age restrictions and/or equipment requirements for certain ages. But again, to be, to be clear, 1925 only deals with e-scooters, and there are other things to perhaps talk about. But I also wanna make this clear, it's not intended to regulate electric bikes, e-bikes. Those are separate in the revised code, and nothing in 1925 or 2625 would address e-bikes.
Well, I also agree with Mr. Harzela. One of my concerns is I see, I see students all over the middle school and high school campus on a regular basis on these types of things. I see 'em right, I'm out of the neighborhoods that are right behind our buildings. So, I mean, we have kids on these all the times, and they're not 16. So, I mean, that, I know we've got kids that ride these to-
They're not 14.
Yeah, they're not 14. That's, that's an agreement there, too. I know we've got kids that ride these to soccer practices, and I'm not talking just ours. I just, I mean, we've transitioned from the days of mopeds. I mean, I used to hand out parking permits for mopeds. And, you know, and now we've got kids who just ride these things in and they park them in the bike rack, and that's, that's where they are. And there are so many other things out there. I mean, I watched a gentleman the other day on a motorcycle, no hands, going down the street like this, you know?
Well, that certainly gives a lot of-
You could call the PD for that one.
Absolutely, but, but, I mean, it's, it's, the whole idea is, is that, I mean, we're aiming right for kids, you know, our officers, it's just, I, I'm kinda confused and concerned 'cause I do feel like this is really aiming more towards, towards kids than anything else.
Well, I think part of the problem is, and I can say this as a mom, I'm, when my kids were that age, I assumed they were behaving, they knew the rules and guidelines to live in the Schledd House, right? But they get out and their brains don't fully function and they do some dumb stuff. So this originated about a year and a half ago, this conversation, one, because I think Mr. Koznplek had observed some concerning behavior, and honestly, I had three neighbors reach out to me about someone that had three people, two of them very young, on an electric scooter, and it was very dangerous. We also had a little girl injure herself pretty badly in front of one of our employees' homes, and they had fallen off their e-scooter. So, we do have to, some of it, the police department and I talked, some of this was just bringing awareness to the kids, like, this is how you should drive your e-scooters. You shouldn't be waving in and out of traffic, you shouldn't have a little, you know, sibling on where they're not to fit, you know, those kind of things, keep your hands on the handlebars. There are a ton of kids, though, that I see handling it very respectfully and responsibly. You know, is the question, because there was, I think, last year, an OSU student, I believe that was the school, that ended up dying because he had been on a scooter and hit his head and had traumatic brain injury, and, I mean, we don't want that to happen either, but again-
But I see, but we see-
Where do you legislate that? Do you or don't you? Do you make that a parent choice, or do you say, hey, you know what, we wanna see these kids in helmets? Do we work with the health department to see if we can provide a program where they, 'cause they used to hand out free helmets for bikes? I don't know if they would do that for this or if they have the grant or not. It's something we can certainly look at if you, you wanna look that way, but-
When I received the latest ordinance on Friday?
Thursday afternoon, yeah.
Thursday afternoon. I, too, was extremely confused and baffled. I didn't know what this meant, I didn't know who it applied to, I didn't understand it. So, Saturday, a good three hours, I decided I was gonna march through this stuff and unpack it. And if it's helpful, I can do that in just a couple of minutes. If, the first thing you need to do is go to what Mark was doing, the regulations definitions. And the definition are basically for five different vehicles. An operation of an electric personal assistant mobility device is a segue. A low-speed micro mobility device is basically e-scooters. Operation of motorized bicycles, which are mopeds, and electric bicycles, which is different from the motorized, obviously. And then there's a fifth, personal assistant mobility devices, and it's only differentiated from the first one by the term electric. Those are basically wheelchair and motorized scooters. The segways, I don't personally think have any relevance to the City of Bryan. I'm not even sure if anyone owns one. If they do, they certainly are hiding it well, 'cause I don't see that around. So I think that's kind of an irrelevant piece. I think the personal assistance mobility device for wheelchairs and motorized scooters, it's already regulated by the state, it's already regulated. The electric bikes are already regulated. If you look at the definition, you have to be a certain age, et cetera. Operation of the low-speed micro mobility device is probably what I would agree we need to focus on. So, that said, I would be the first to agree, at the first step, is to retract the ordinance that was sent out, what, is that a number?
26. The one from Thursday, ordinance 26.
We untabled 19.
Yeah, we tabled.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Well, it's the one that was just sent out Friday.
The one, tonight, is ordinance 2625.
Yes. So I would like to look at withdrawing 20, ordinance 26, because I don't think it has any relevance whatsoever since it focuses on segways. So that would be a motion, can I make a motion?
You can make a motion to withdraw-
To withdraw that piece.
That's been read.
And then we can go on and discuss 19. So, my motion is to get rid of that which gave me a lot of angst and a wait, a good amount on Saturday investigation.
We have a second for that motion to withdraw.
I'll second it.
Is withdraw and table the same thing?
No, withdraw is gone.
No, it's gone, it's dropped.
Thanks. John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Now, if you don't mind, if we talk about 19, there is, is it 19? I'm sorry.
We're gonna make a motion to take that off the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will motion to take 19 off the table.
I get it.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
When, when I was looking into- When, when I was looking into, which to be specific, is the 4511.514, low speed micro mobility devices, the latest version of that was passed by the Ohio Legislature in April 15th, 2021. At that time, they talk about what you can and can't do, they also talk about who can and who can't do. And the who has to do with no person shall knowingly rent a low speed micro mobility device to a person who's under 16 years of age. That is utterly stupid when you stop and think about the term rent. So if I as a father want to go out and buy, it's okay, and I give it to my eight-year-old. So, legislature didn't think of that until the university sent a 90 law review, put it to their attention. And they said, oh, yeah, well, maybe it should be 16, you have to be at least 16 to operate, and then they did a 14, 15 thing, but you need to at least be 16. The problem is, neither, may I say you, Mark, neither Mark nor I can find that in writing, even though everywhere you look, it says effective June 30th, 2025, that goes into effect. Therefore, since neither he nor I can find that, I have to default to 4511, oh, excuse me, uh, 4511.514, April 15th, 2021, Ohio Revised Code, which says that you can rent. One last comment, I unlike some of the expressed opinions, I am not happy with what I am seeing on the streets, nor in the bus, nor in that high school parking lot. I would invite anyone, anyone, to come, I know Larry's there anyway, to come at 2:50 and watch a 12-year-old speed in and out with a bunch of kindergarteners and third graders. Then as I go down Center Street, a different 12-year-old is going, neither one of which have helmets, are going in and out. So my experience is not quite as understanding as some others. And I think there's value in us discussing that there is age and protective device limits that we put in our ordinance as we, and we don't have to do it tonight, we, I don't think we can do it tonight, can we?
You can, you can make a motion and-
And amend it tonight.
Yeah, but I would like to-
But I have some reasons not, to suggest not to, but we can get out.
Well, I was just thinking to give you time, to give us one that's not as confusing, that is focused more on how would it look if we put those things in it and then, then would give us time to look it over and see what we think. And each of us have our own votes. So, my, my thought is, is that if you could, and I'm looking, when I say you, Mark, could rewrite ordinance 19 and put in there as a draft, um, at least the two things I would like to see. I don't like the 14 and 15 piece. Once again, perhaps I'm the stupid one, but to me, to make a statement that 14 and 15 year olds with an ear and eye shot of a soup, of a, an adult, doesn't seem realistic nor anywhere, anywhere near enforceable. So I would be more simplistic and suggest that you need to be 16 to ride the e-scooter and a 16 and 17-year-old needs to wear a helmet. That can be ousted or not agreed to by anybody else up here, but if that could be put in and then voted to either take it out or leave it in, that would at least, what more do you need from us to write up an ordinance?
Well, I would, whatever guidance anyone wants to provide to me, and again, it doesn't have to all be right this minute either, um, you know, th- this is, this table, when you removed it from the table, um, I guess, is this, would this-
It's on a third reading.
This is the third reading?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, but you can always put it back on the table.
Yeah.
And before I forget, I did just Google age requirement in Ohio for an e-scooter.
Yes.
And several sites, site to 4511.514, saying it's 16 or 14 and it's wrong. So several sites, if you do your own research, you will come across sites that, that say-
That's how John and I and Mary all discovered it because it's, it's tabbed that way.
Because I just came across another one that has, has every state's summary and that's current as of February of this year and it doesn't have any age restriction. So, to be clear, there's misunderstanding about the application of the segways or statute that I can put in there confused. So do your own research, there is no age restriction for e-scooters in Ohio, nor is anything coming in the transit budget bill that's going to be effective at the end of January.
Would this give you more time to check with people who might know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's why I think we need more time, is to-
I agree.
I, I, I want data, I want facts. Um, and if, if the fact is, no, there's no age restriction, no, there's no protection restriction, then I can, I can make my own choice going forward.
The other, the other thing that I would like to see, uh, the one person in this room that'll probably impact more than anybody is Chief Ruskey. So, if you have any thoughts, please make sure that we are aware of them so that we can build some things into this, uh, that'll help you out.
Appreciate that. I'm just making notes, I'll discuss it with Mark and get back with you guys, if that's okay.
How old do they have to be to ride a moped? Is it 15?
It's, I do.
Mopeds even a thing anymore?
It's 14 to 15, but three and a half hours on Saturday is paying off. Um, 14 to 15, and you must get a probationary license, that's a, there's a process involved that I'm not going to go into, and you have to pass a test. So, you can ride a moped, which is interesting, because e-bikes are 16. I don't know who's doing the cross-checking on these legislative issues.
Yeah.
But they need fire.
They're not.
There's no one.
But now you understand why my confusion and my hesitance with this, because there are so many contradictory or uneven aspects of this. While, while I respect the whole idea of, of operating a vehicle safely and protecting the, our children and so forth, I'm not opposed to that. It just seems like it's just a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and it's just like, I'm, I'm not understanding that, so.
No, it's fine.
So I will tell you, John, because I initially reached out to Representative Hoops, he didn't know what was in there even though he's on the finance committee, so, because they snuck it in at the last part of, of course. But it was specific to Segway, he did have his staff research it and, you know, Mark kind of confirmed it too because they were also looking into it, um, that, that what we were looking at in ordinance 26, which had the age restrictions, was specific to Segway and that only counted to Segway. And, um, it got put in at the back end of a, a financial bill for the transportation department. So, we go back to 19, that doesn't have any age, helmet, equipment restrictions, and was more, honestly, I think, for, we sat down with the police department, the parks director, and we were talking about, you know, should we push these kids when they're going to rec parks, should they just be on the sidewalks, but then we have to also be courteous of the people that walk on the sidewalks. And there's a whole big conversation, a lot of this, and when the chief and I talked was, let's get, if, if this is a request, like, let's get some informational pieces out to talk to the kids. We have SROs in the school that can give, you know, some safety talks, if, if this is going to be a topic, was, I think-
So, Mark, if you could confirm, there is no, confirm the best of your ability-
Yes.
-that there is no age or protection, um, piece, we can do it because we can be more restrictive, it states that in the ORC. And if you could also coordinate, obviously, with, it sounds like I didn't really think about Mr. Donovan.
We thought about Mr. Donovan because of all the-
No, it makes sense.
-regional paths.
With the folks here and come back to council with, here is a proposed piece, we can then kind of ruminate about it, chew it up, and then discuss it at a, at the meeting. To be able to do that, if people are interested in that, it sounds like we need to make a motion to table 19 again, is that what I heard?
Correct, but before you do that-
Sure.
You, you, they all have 19 in front of them now?
Yes.
So, if you can take a look at 19, so, in 37, proposed section 377.01, all of those restrictions and requirements are straight from the revised code. So you can do more restrictive, but you can't get rid of those. If you take a look at the second page, under section 377.03, other than A2, all of those restrictions, none of those restrictions are in, specifically in the Ohio Revised Code. So, these are things that I put in after researching and looking at other city ordinances before all the muckety-muck with segways, that I felt made sense, but you can do more or you can change these or you can get rid of them. I just wanted you to understand you have flexibility under O3, but not under O1.
Which one in O3 was, uh?
A2.
Eight.
Twenty mile an hour.
The 20 mile an hour. All right, thank you.
I, I guess my other question is, is do we want something that is so specific as to e-scooters? I mean, there are single wheeled devices out there that, you know-
Well, that's a question too, there's also e, um, electric skateboards that seem to me more dangerous without any hind of our-
Yeah, there's so, there, there's so many other things out there.
Let me do some research on that as well and provide you with some information on ideas of, you know, what other cities are doing. Um, there's nothing in the revised code that deals with those issues that I'm aware of. But again, that's a question that, yeah, it makes sense to talk about and think about as you're considering e-scooters, is what else is there that deserves consideration for potential regulation and how they're used?
And again, I think the majority of the complaints that we got on the administrative level were the zigzagging in and out of traffic and were definitely the multiple people on an e-scooter that is outside of the manufacturing rules. Um, but Mr. Kozinplak, I do want to ask you, because this came up a long time ago, but e-scooters were not necessarily your concern, what was it that was your concern?
Uh, three-wheel electric bikes, e-bikes, without markers on Main and High Street.
Okay.
Right, they, they were in turn lanes, there was no markings, there were no turn signals, there was no brake lights, um, right? And, uh, you know, I don't see anything in, in 1925, even states anything about Main and High, any, any state.
Doesn't. And, and that one's on my fault because you all have a copy, I made an e-bikes like golf cart restrictions, question mark note, that I did not get to Mark, because all of a sudden we had this big state code that was limiting and I, I just got distracted by that. But you're right, the last meeting, it was brought up, Mark.
Okay.
Um, the, the question that I think too with Main and High is that they not traverse on Main and High, we have a lot of semi-traffic that comes through here and so the request was that they were able to cross at a light, they were able to be on 35 mile an hour roads. This one with the e-scooter says 25, no higher than 25, but we have in our golf cart ordinances where they can basically be everywhere but Main and High, but they can cross at Main and High. Now, I will also tell you though, that Main and High is outside of Center Street, that's basically the ways you get into town. And I did have a couple that lives outside of town that rides their e-bikes in, an adult group that have done all the safety stuff, um, and they were like, how are we supposed to get into town if we can't traverse down Main and High? Um, we had those same questions with golf carts too, so I want you to be aware that that might add a complication to some folks.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a, I think there's a huge definition between e-bikes and e-scooters.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, there, there really is, and I don't want to, I don't want to lump everything into one.
I agree.
You know, you don't, because I think e-bikes should be 35, you know, be able to ride, drive on 35 mile an hour roads, if not, more roads, but not on Main and High, not on e-crosses.
Yeah, I think the definition, e-bikes go faster than e-bikes.
Well, and they're also, there's three classifications of e-bikes.
Right.
So it's not quite that, the more you lump this stuff together, the more complicated, convoluted, and I wouldn't want to enforce it because I wouldn't know how. Is that a class one, is that a class two, is that a class three? How old was that person, where they going, oh my gosh, what road are they on? It gets a little bit unwieldy.
You know, but the golf carts have to have, you know, lights and-
Registration tags and lights, blinkers and all.
Yeah, you know, that's, you know, I mean, if you're going to be, if it's going to be a daily use item, you know?
So, can I ask, and, because I don't have an e-bike, other than the ones that are at the police department, that I don't ride, because I'm not, I'm not certified for that, do you have a blinker, do you have a headlight?
A mine?
Yeah.
Mine has a headlight, it does not have a blinker.
So you use manual?
If, if that was a, to be a rule, I would have one. It's a, called Lincoln brand, it's the most popular brand. Their newest model actually does have a brake light and blinker is built into it, but mine's a year, uh, mine's about two years old.
Does it have a brake light?
It does have a brake light.
Okay, so when you're turning, you just use like the bike hand motions, yeah?
Yeah, and that's fine.
And nobody under the age of 16 can ride an e-bike.
Sure. Sorry to put you on the spot, I just-
No, it's all right.
Sometimes I like to know-
Most people near 20 don't understand the hand-
Well, you know, just look at all the motorcycle accidents, you know, that's what we want to try to eliminate, just by just illuminating what you're doing and making people aware that you're riding a bike. That's my only concern. But yeah, the, the Main and High thing.
Sure. You have a note on that, Mark?
I did.
Because I literally did not get that to you, sorry from the last time. I apologize, Mr. Kozinplak.
I, I want to make it as close to the golf court, golf cart ordinance as we can, I guess on the e-bike side of things. The scooter thing, we can have that conversation, but, you know, I, I get the younger kids being out there and wanting to do things and, and riding and that's their main form of transportation. I think that's a great thing, we just, you know, how do we do it?
How do I feel like, I agree, how do we do it?
I feel like we're talking about two different things here.
Oh, we absolutely are.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
You're going to have to get two different ordinances dealing. Well, this one that we table, put back on the table, but also there'll be, have to be a separate one for e-bikes, right, Mark?
Yes, if you want to do anything.
If you, if you want to.
Yeah, I don't even think we need one for e-bikes.
I, I do not, if, what I would encourage council to do is go and look at the definitions, it really is helpful, it's not just crap work, it's very helpful to look at 40 section, Ohio Revised Code, 4501.01, motor vehicle definition, excuse me?
4511.
Of course I'm right, I'm reading the damn thing. 4501.01.
Nope, you just said 4501.
Point 01.
There you go.
And I would encourage you to read that and then go to those subtitles specifically of the one we're talking about, low speed. And then you can also go to the electric bike. When you go to the electric bike, it'll be interesting to see if you believe we need more than what's there. Personally, I don't. As it relates to e-scooters, I do believe. I've seen way too much in the last year.
Are you seeing these e-scooters on 35 mile an hour roads?
Yeah, they're, they're on Center Street for sure.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's their main, like, from the school-
And 10 to 12-year-olds.
To the parks.
I saw an eight-year-old today, asking him his age, he said he's eight.
So I, because this is a little bit of what I'm struggling with the, with the ordinance in general is, and maybe, Mark, you've got enough guidance to put something together. What is the feeling on helmets, elbow pads, certain ages of required helmets or elbow pads, no requirement at all, like, I- pads, no requirement at all, like, I?
I don't find with helmets on sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. But, I, yeah, I'm with, I understand what you're saying. They fall off, and they, like, for roller, whatever, that, rollers, not rollers getting, but the roller.
Roller blades?
Blading, yeah.
Oh, I did that without a helmet my whole childhood, Mr. Bets.
Rode a bike without a helmet.
I know. But, my bike didn't quite go twenty miles an hour unless I was going down a big hill in Ayersville.
Yeah, I think, I think the e-scooter is definitely a helmet. You gotta, you know, if you're under sixteen, absolutely. And I'm not opposed to, you know, not putting an age limit on that, on the e-scooter, but you gotta wear a helmet.
So, what I, what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to put in what I am hearing, not necessarily consensus or anything, is, are the most restrictive provisions that will include, nobody under sixteen, that, under eighteen, gotta wear a helmet, under, nobody under sixteen can operate. And again, if you don't want the sixteen, that's fine, you don't, but if I put it in there, you can, it's easier to take it out than it is to words. So, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna look at the, I'm gonna look at the, golf carts, sorry, golf cart ordinance. If there's anything in there that we want, that might make sense to incorporate in this ordinance, and then add the restrictions on, on the Main, that Main Street route intersection.
So, I have a question. People kind of panicked in the community when the first article, the first reading happened. And so, I put nineteen on Facebook, on a community page, which I almost never do. But, there was some undue panic, that I was like, hold on, you know, this is what, and, and people calmed down quite a bit. My concern is, if we come back, and we have these age restrictions, and we have these, and then pass it as a third reading, we've kind of lost the transparency to the public. Is there a way to start over? Like, is there a way to withdraw ordinance nineteen and start over on a first reading at another meeting? Would you suggest that? Would you not suggest that?
I would suggest, I would suggest amend, at the next meeting, amending, to whatever degree you want to, nineteen twenty-five, and putting it, not voting on it, though, just put, table it again.
Okay.
And that way, that way, there can be some publicity, so that members of the public understand that, here's, if there's a new version of it, we will go ahead, you know, and city council will be taking it up, whatever the next meeting.
Because I'd like for the paper to be able to report on something, so that people, if they wanna comment, like, like, Mr. Harcilla came tonight, and I don't know that you would've known that if it wasn't in the paper. Is that fair? So, I wanna make sure the public has the ability to read it, because it will change a lot.
I don't think we need to cram this through, no.
No.
Chief, is there any regulation on bicycles right now?
Just the ones that have been since our childhood, like, under O, right?
What's that?
The ones under O R C that have always been there?
Yeah, just, just your standard ones. But, you do have to have a working headlight on your front of your bike, and a rear light, if you're going to be riding at night.
A reflective on a bicycle, yeah.
Is there any age restrictions on riding on twenty-five, thirty-five mile an hour roads?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Because I really, I, I really have, I really think that bicycles and e-scooters are the same, to me. You know, when, but it comes right down to it, right? Because I see a lot of kids riding bikes erratically, you know, it's just, this has a motor on it. Does it go the same speed? It might go a little bit faster. But, you know, I was just kinda curious on the rules and regulations for bicycles at this point.
I think there is a local one.
It goes faster and it has less margin of error.
Yep.
Because you're talking about something, if I go like this, I'm going off the curb. If I'm on a bike, and I go like this, I'm going off the sidewalk and coming back.
Sure.
So, it, there are differences, um, from my perspective, but, well, write us something back, and let's talk about it.
I think it's great conversation, so.
Yeah, it is.
We need to research that question a little bit, because I do think there's an ordinance on the books from a long time ago that prohibited them on the square, bicycles.
No.
When I was a kid, you had to have a bike license. You still have to have a bike license.
We encourage them, in case they're stolen, by the bike license.
Yeah.
I used to love those.
Okay.
Put it on there. Nineteen sixty-eight, look at that.
Do we need to do anything with this?
So, I mean, ask the clerk, can I ask a couple of technical questions?
Sure.
I just wanna make sure I document this right. So, we have had a first reading on nineteen, then a second reading on nineteen, in that same. It's been untabled tonight, but it wasn't officially read. Was tonight a third reading of nineteen?
I would say, go ahead and read it, so it's an official third reading, to be technically correct.
And then, we're looking to table it again?
Yes, that's the motion, that once again, I prematurely made.
What was that?
I said, once again, that I prematurely made.
I have a technical question myself, then. If we, if this is a third reading, and we untable it the next time, does that mean we have to have a final vote on it at that point?
No, you table it again.
Table again, okay.
As long as you want, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, too. So, you could technically table it three times, and give it a fake three readings, if you want.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, you do, three seventy-three point twenty-three, of your codified ordinances, do, do address electric bicycles. So, you may wanna take a look at that.
Was that in the golf cart ordinance?
No, it's, this is electric bicycles. I just, I just looked up, did a search. What is it? Three seventy-three point twenty-three, codified ordinances.
What year was that passed?
That's a good question, because it seems, and it's, 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 oh, wait, it's, it's straight to the Ohio Revised Code, forty-five eleven point five two-two. It actually, it's odd, because it doesn't have a date of when it was adopted. I'm wondering if it just automatically got added.
I bet it got added from our annual ordinance when the state changes the laws.
Right, which is weird, because.
Was it April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one? Because that's when the state adopted it.
Doesn't have a date, it just, so, anyway, there is something in there. Probably, I'm sure, mirrors state law.
Well, screen, and, well, it's now American Legal Publishing, would typically update that online for our code library.
Okay, that's surprising, but it's okay, nothing wrong with it.
Perfect.
I'm gonna read this a third time.
Okay.
So, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-five, and ordinance creating chapter three seven seven of the Brian Codified Ordinances, to regulate the use of low-speed microability devices, micro-mobility devices. Then, I'll motion to table it again.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to table nineteen twenty twenty-five.
And I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a resolution. John, please, number and read.
Resolution number twenty-eight twenty twenty-five, a resolution to accept a thirty-two-thousand five-hundred-dollar donation from various sponsors to the Parks and Recreation Department of Fountain City.
Good evening.
Evening.
In front of you, you should have a list of our, hopefully, maybe, our last group of sponsors. Obviously, in that group, you'll see that Bard Manufacturing is a huge sponsor, and wanna thank them for their donation. Their concert will be coming up in a couple weeks here. So, we're really, really excited to have Bard back on with us at the amphitheater. So, I would ask that you approve it, so we can hopefully transfer it here in a minute.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
And Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
And I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number eight is a resolution. John, please, number and read.
Resolution number twenty-nine twenty twenty-five, a resolution to accept a five-thousand-dollar donation from the Brian Soccer Association to the Parks and Recreation Department for pavilion renovations at the Recreation Park soccer fields.
Yeah, maybe where, we have a soccer concession stand restroom building located out in the middle of the soccer fields there in Recreation Park, on the west side of the park. We would like to, or with the help of the Soccer Association and their generous donation, we will be going to metal siding, metal roof, also doing some work on, there's, like, a picnic area out there. The other thing, too, is when we put the pavilion in, we didn't extend the concrete wide enough. So, whenever it rains, we have mud all the way around the pavilion. So, we'll expand the concrete around the pavilion, so you can get to the bathrooms, in and out of the bathrooms, without having to walk, hopefully, through the mud puddles, if it's raining.
Are those wood picnic tables out there now?
Actually, I think we have the plastic ones out there. The heavy ones are out there. I think we started with the wood ones, and they, they kinda grow legs and move around.
I've amended, yeah.
Yeah. So, I think we have the plastic ones, the heavy plastic ones out there right now. But, don't quote me on that. Again, would like to thank the Soccer Association for their continued support of everything we do to improve their facilities, and what we can provide for the kids and the families playing soccer in Recreation Park.
Well, I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
And Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve, second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine is an ordinance. John, please, number and read.
Ordinance number twenty-seven twenty twenty-five, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Brian for fiscal year ending December thirty-one twenty twenty-five, and declaring an emergency. I did add an item to the ordinance that you received in your packet, so you received the new ordinance this evening before the meeting. That item was an addition of the forty-two thousand dollars reflecting the grant that the Street Department got for the Salt Brian equipment that council approved a few weeks ago. We had not appropriated that money yet. So, that was an addition, that was the change in the ordinance that I provided. In addition to that, we also are appropriating the two donations, or the multiple donations that Ben just talked about. There was another set of donations, three thousand dollars, I believe, for plantings or flowers that also came through the Parks Department. And then, the largest item in this request is a little over a hundred and four thousand dollars. As you all know, the probationary, the probation department receives its funding from the state of Ohio in the form of a two-year grant that runs from July one to June thirtieth. And so, we only appropriated half of the year in the twenty twenty-five budget. There's a new grant that takes effect July one, and so, we are asking to appropriate the new grant dollars to get them through July through December of twenty twenty-five.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number ten is a resolution. John, please, number and read.
Resolution number thirty twenty twenty-five, a resolution stating the services that the city will provide to the proposed annexation of properties located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-one in Palaski Township, known as parcel numbers zero six three two ten oh two, oh two six dot zero zero zero, and oh six three two ten oh two, oh two seven dot zero zero zero.
I'll handle this one. So, council, on March twenty-fourth, the clerk treasurer got a letter from the office of Ryan S. Thompson Law Firm, and basically asking that we annex this property in. This property is in need of city water and sewer. It is an ordinance on the books that has been there for some time, that if a property is contiguous and is able to be annexed in, they have to actually file that petition with the county common, or, I'm sorry, the county commissioners, in order to get that approval. Prior to them doing that, we would need you to accept that annexation request. The hearing is currently set with the county commissioners at ten AM on May twenty-ninth. So, obviously, you guys weren't gonna be meeting before then. So, we are asking that you allow this to happen, so that if the commissioners approve, we can then provide water and sewer services to this home.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve. I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number eleven is a building permit. Andy?
Good evening. Tonight, I have a building permit for Brian Municipal Utilities, eight forty-one East Ederton Street. CB and Hour Construction will be doing the work. State construction type is two B, state use group is S one. Cost for the project is one million one hundred ninety thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars. This is for a electric warehouse addition of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three square feet.
There's no questions. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve is a liquor permit.
Yes, council, this was also mailed to my office. And again, Party PAC is changing ownership, or they have, so they're just asking to transfer their existing liquor permit to the new owners. I'm gonna ask, unless you have any issues with this, that you make a motion to. Yeah, wave the hearing.
Wave the hearing.
Got it.
It's okay, I screwed that up.
It's hot tonight. My brain is kind of over it.
I motion to waive the hearing.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes the items on the addendum. We'll go around the room. Mayor, do you have anything?
I do have a couple things. One, congratulations to the Brian High School class twenty twenty-five. They've had a really successful year, lots of scholarships, lots of athletic and art accolades. They're a pretty great class of a lot of, I think, different types of kids that have just melded really well and made their mark on Brian High School. And we actually have quite a few whose parents worked for the city. So, congratulations, parents, as well, on your children's successes. Graduation is Sunday, so do be aware of that. And then, Monday, lineup is at nine AM for the Memorial Day Parade. They line up at Goodwill and travel to Fountain Grove Cemetery. The ceremony itself for Memorial Day begins at nine fifteen AM. That is it. Thank you.
John, do you have anything?
I don't.
Department heads?
We had a pre-con meeting today for the twenty twenty-five asphalt program. Sounds like the contractor will be in latter part of next week, and sounds like they may start milling Center Street the week of June second. So, just a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
After-school buses needed.
Yep.
Any other department heads? Newspaper?
I know.
Are you warm?
We're gonna go outside.
Mark, anything?
So, thank you.
Oh, yes, you do.
Do I?
Committees?
You're gonna discuss committees?
Oh, my God.
I mean, that's why you're here tonight, but it's fine.
Right, it's the heat.
It's the heat.
It is the heat.
So, I sent to you folks about, two months ago, maybe, maybe a little less, a memo about committee structure, and.
And.
I, did he?
I, no, I don't remember that. I remember you, you talked to me about it.
Okay.
I don't think they got it.
I sent it to the mayor. So, so, right now, as I understand, you obviously have a council, you have five councils. You have committee members, you have then individual committees that have two members apiece. In order to meet best practices and avoid any sunshine law issues, I am making a recommendation to you to change the committee structure slightly. So what that means, what I'm recommending, is that, you have five, you have five committees? Four?
Approximately five.
Well, whatever, that, that you, you establish, and the city of Bexley did this for the similar reason. You establish a committee of the whole structure. That means all five council members are on every day. You have one person who is designated as your committee chair. Then, and that person would be responsible for interfacing with the administration and dealing, you know, introducing legislation, whatever the case might be, within that, their bailiwick. But that you, that, that all five council members are then committee members, which means that on an issue-by-issue basis, when the committee chair, let's say the safety committee says, hey, I've got this whole e-scooter thing going on, I need to bounce this off of somebody outside the council so we can hash things out, that committee chair will then pick one council member to talk to. That committee chair and that one council member is less than a majority of council, so that meeting does not have to be open to, it's not subject to sunshine law requirements. If you have two or three committee, if you have committees that are, that consist of two or three people, then anytime, technically, anytime a one committee member talks to another committee member, it's technically subject to sunshine laws. So this would be a way to legally avoid the application of sunshine laws when two people are talking about a particular matter. So again, if it's, let's say it's the budget, and whoever's the budget chair says, okay, it's budget season, I'm gonna pick one other council member, it has to be that same council member on that subject to talk about the budget and vet things, meet with the administration, and then help come back to city council and have that discussion in public. So I would recommend that you make that change so that there's no risk of you violating the sunshine law, which on its own is a no-no, but it also could result in legislation being overturned if it's a result of a sunshine law violation. So again, I, I think there's, the one exception I do think is the negotiation committee because negotiations are held in private, so I don't think that's an issue. But everything else, everything else I would recommend to have, to get every committee, committee as a whole, all five of you are on every committee, except maybe a negotiation committee, and then the committee chair that's assigned can choose on a case-by-case basis if he or she wants to meet with one other council member to discuss these things. And again, structurally, obviously, it's not something that can or has to be done tonight. I know you have people, every year you volunteer to be one what committee or whatever. I think going sometime in twenty twenty-five, you know, the next meeting or two, I would recommend that you come up, and I can work with you on how to come up with this structure, but to come up with the committee chair, committee as a whole, committee chair, and then, again, go from there. And, and I can tell you this, not that this makes, it's certainly not the only way of doing it, but the city of Bexley went to this structure a few years ago for this very reason, so that every time a committee member wanted to pick up the phone, pick up the phone and talk to another committee member, there wasn't, there wasn't a potential sunshine law issue, it just avoids that. And I'm happy to talk to anybody offline on this too, kind of sprung it on you. And what I will do is I will make, oh, Mayor, if you could, could you provide them with the, with the.
Yeah, I can, sorry.